All right, I am going to call to order this meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Board on August 24th, 2022. It is 3:04 PM and let's go around table. And get everyone's names for record and just to do introductions at all the same time. Because we have some new faces. I'm August Grant, the Economic Development Director for Grand County. Rachel, do you want to go next? We'll go this way.
Rachel Bartlett, Economic Development.
Walter, Grand County Economic Development Specialist.
Gary McDaniel, Grand County Commission. Elisa Martin, Planning and Planning. And I'm going to pre-introduce you. Here is our new Vista in our department, especially to be working on housing, all kinds of housing research and trying to come up with some indicators that we put on our website for like a little dashboard on how we're doing progress. So go ahead.
Yeah.
Janu. Janu from Vermont.
Is that a French name?
It's French French.
French French?
Yes. Her first name is Anne. Carly Castle of the city.
Justin Duncan.
Zee Minis, Economic Development Advisor.
Forrest Rogers, MOAB Music.
Elisa Starks, Economic Development. Karen Guzman, New Private Sector.
And board member.
And board member.
Kelly.
Kelly Thornton, the Department of Workforce Services.
Megan.
Megan, I'm from Regional Small Business Development Center in Utah State University.
Brad.
Yeah, Brad Bertasch, board member. Retired entrepreneurship guy and current angel investor.
And an all-around angel. Emily.
Hopefully, I'm an all-around angel, too. I don't know.
You all are.
Grand County Planning Commission. Nice to meet y'all.
Rob Walker, Chair of MOAB Community Childcare and Member of this Board.
And perfect timing. Can you introduce yourself?
Sure. Yeah, hi, my name is Caitlin Myers. I am the Executive Director of the Maua Area Community Land Trust and the Vice Chair of the Maua Area Housing Task Force.
Awesome. Okay, are there any conflicts of interest, disclosures, or exportation communication to disclose? Seeing none, are there any citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we already did introductions. There are no presentations. So we're going to move right ahead to discussion and action items to approval of the July 27th, 2022 Economic Development Advisory Board meeting minutes. We have here, happy to quickly scroll through them if anybody would like. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I moved to approve July 27th.
Do I have a second? The same, let's give you a second. Here is your. All in favor, does anybody need to remind who's a voting? Is that internalized?
He's not, but I know I'm not.
Okay.
I, I, yeah.
Okay, you are Forrest Dennis?
Yes. Kelly.
Kelly.
Rob.
Rob.
Brad.
Brad. Yeah, okay, so with that in mind, all in favor. Pass it unanimously. Karen made the motion, Dennis seconded it. Awesome. Okay, moving on. We're going to review the Rural County Grant Part A Fiscal Year 2022 Award. Looking at the remaining funds to be allocated. There's a couple items on here. I'm going to turn this time over to Ben. You have the floor.
Okay, great. Can you scroll to the first chart?
Then on this.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so hopefully you all were able to take a look at the packet. And by the way, let me know if you do or don't like the packet.
We can keep doing individual items, but I like that. So at the bottom of this document, as you will see, this was approved on May 3rd, 2022. What we're looking at is specifically an approval of that third from the left column, the adjusted amount. So when we applied for this grant last year, we applied with the categories on the left and the original budgeted amount. Then our office had some turnover. We had some restrategization about our priorities and with all the things that have been going on, frankly, I think we've just had a hard time spending the money as quick and on as programs as developed as we'd like them to. So one of the reasons I think it's great to talk about this now is because at the next meeting, hopefully we'll discuss a little bit at the end of today's meeting, if there's time. The application for the Rural County Grant for 2023 will be due. So that'll be this Board's job to approve that application at the next meeting, which will mean some workshopping between now and then. Hopefully, there's some time to discuss it. Megan, were you saying something? Oh, okay, sorry. So anyways, so anyways, going back to May, we consolidated some of these categories to make it a bit easier to spend and also in line with what this Board determined were economic development priorities. If you scroll down August to the next chart, the next chart is just a consolidated version of, okay, we've removed those categories for no longer looking at. And now we just have what we're trying to spend and what has been spent. I did make a mistake. We already have invested that $4,000 with the AmeriCorps Vista programs. That is out of our county coffers. But the reason I bring this to everyone's attention is just because this Board serves, at least in part, to approve these applications that come from the state. This body has immense say over how we spend these funds, and I won't say they're guaranteed, but they are nearly assured right now that this funding will continue to rural counties like ourselves. So for the next grant, which is due at the end of next month, we'll be up for another $200,000 for 2023. But it's this body's job to determine what priorities go into that application, how we spend it, if we want to try and develop new programs or fund existing programs that are in line with, you know, what we see the state doing. But ultimately, it's this body's job to make that determination, our job to see it through, but yours to tell us what the priorities are. So with the priorities that we've set, we have some money that's that we need to spend, that we actually need to spend about two months ago.
I need to report on by next week.
Yes, and we need to report on by next week. So again, I think this goes into the conversation of how we can make next year's application better, so we can spend it over time in a much more intentional way. But right now, I think the most important focus is spending this money so that we're eligible to apply for the next round. So on that note, if you look in the top right, under the actual or proposed expenditure, we have what's left $58,160. We're spending $67,840 on the Nexus Study, which was just approved by the Commission. We have an onboarding with BAE coming up next week.
Yeah, Wednesday.
And I did include.
That's different.
And I didn't include, that's, right? And I did include in the packet a link to the Nexus Study report that, the proposal that BAE submitted. It was a long thing, but you're welcome to have read it. I did include as well the agenda item to kind of get a summary. And I know that, Elisa, if you, if anyone has any questions about the Nexus Study, I know Elisa is more than happy to answer them. That being said, we, as a body, before we got our new members, did approve to fund that. So that money is probably out the door Friday, I would imagine, for kind of checks this week. Yeah, go ahead.
I just tried to analyze this Nexus Study proposal. I would like to hear again from our side, can we just summarize it very shortly? What is the exactly benefit to us?
Do you want me to do that now?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I did prepare actually some notes, because when I talk about this, it gets complicated and I tend to stumble in my words. So I'll just leave this. So there are two phases to the study. Phase one of the study will analyze two different approaches to achieving an increase in supply of deed-restricted workforce housing. For consistency with other regional efforts such as MOAB's active employment housing requirements, the study will provide the necessary analysis to implement a workforce housing requirement as a use standard.
Elisa.
Yes.
Can we slow down?
Yes.
Speak a little louder. I'm just noticing.
Okay. I use, so when we talk about a use standard, these are things like, you know, when we have heavy industrial uses, we require sound barriers or soundproof, using soundproof construction materials to mitigate the noise impacts. So that's kind of, and that's for the public's health, safety, and welfare. That's the purpose of of our, you know, the justification for our land use requirements. So similarly, so BAE will produce the necessary analysis to prove the nexus between future development. And this is where it gets kind of big, is where we need to, we are going to be providing BAE with the numbers of kind of a rough estimate of buildout, future buildout based on our current zoning. And the, they're going to determine the need for workforce housing based on the ability to ensure the public health, safety, and welfare of Grand County citizens based on that buildout. So this is, this is the approach that MOAB City's H, H ordinance was based on. It can only be applied to new subdivisions, as I understand it, because it does not involve the option for a fee in lieu. It simply would require new subdivisions or new housing developments to set aside a certain percentage of housing as deed-restricted for workforce. And it doesn't have anything to do with restricting the market value or affordability.
Which we can't do.
Which we can't do without providing an incentive. This is.
Right. And so that was part of the impetus of commissioning the study in the first place, is if we can't restrict housing based on affordability, we could at least try to find reasoning to restrict it based on workforce.
Is that? Yeah, exactly. So alternatively, BAE will also analyze the proportional exaction approach, which does involve a linkage fee or fees in lieu that developers would pay in order to contribute to the provision of workforce housing. This is something that can be applied across all types of development, residential and non-residential. These two methods would be evaluated against each other so that the county may choose the best tool to implement. And that is not the way that the city, that MOAB City went. So that's something that would be kind of evaluated for, you know, basic feasibility and if it even would be, if it would make sense. So phase one also takes a look at how we can improve incentives for affordable housing as opposed to only deed-restricting housing. We already provide this incentive in our code, but developers have yet to take advantage of that. And we also want to look at other ways we can implement incentives, possibly through leveraging our future land use map, which is currently being developed. Phase two of the study is optional and would evaluate the feasibility of the two programs, which would be funded by the Rural County Grant Funds in the future. Those are, those two programs are deed restriction purchase program and an ADU incentive program. We feel that BAE will do a great job and they've had lots of experience in our area over the years, so.
Did they provide like a previous Nexus Study or a similar study?
Yeah, so the Joint City and County Housing Nexus Study was in, was produced in 2018. And that was the basis for our current Assured Housing section in our code, which doesn't really do much, honestly. It doesn't really, we've never really been able to get anything from that in terms of affordable housing. So we want to go in and make the changes to that section to make it more effective and implementable.
I think Emily Campbell wants to jump in.
Well, just to add a little bit of context, I mean, part of the reason we weren't able to do anything about that is so many of the properties that applied to were already vested. And so it predominantly, or if I remember, exclusively applied to large overnight accommodation developments. It, so it happened pretty much in parallel with the work we were doing in order to remove short-term rentals and overnight accommodations from underlying zones. And the only additional overnight accommodations that we've allowed since then have been too small to qualify for that, under the code as written. So it's, it's sort of a tension of, we don't know if it hasn't been taken advantage of because it's just not a good enough incentive, or if it's just because the way that we have restructured development priorities in our community or incentivized development priorities is just sort of now no longer in line with the type of, you know, the way that the Assured Housing ordinance is written, so.
Isn't it, I mean, a point though that we did gain, you know, over a million dollars for the city?
We, I think we used it differently because we got that fee in lieu with overnight accommodations. We got a lot of, it was worth that. 1.582 million and we have more coming in from hotels that vested but haven't been built. So pretty successful for us, I would say.
I don't know that it's a provision.
Yeah.
But I think Emily, I mean, the difference between the city and county was just what was in the pipeline before and after.
And then pretty immediately, city and county both took their own measures to reduce the amount of overnight accommodations.
Right.
To effectively kind of shut off that.
Yeah. Stream. Exactly. Yeah, the, the applications for overnight accommodations that were already submitted before the Assured Housing ordinance was adopted, those all got in right before they could be assessed the fee. Right?
Any other questions about the Nexus Study or about the Rural County Grant Program? Generally, to be clear, there's not a question, there's not an action item for this body to review or act with, we've already ascribed funding to this.
Correct.
So for the sake of thinking about what we need to be critically evaluating, it's what we have now.
Yeah. Correct.
We're just trying to clarify that people understand we've already put my course.
Cool. So what we've got left then is $58,160. And we have two proposals in the agenda for potential approval by this body on how to spend those funds. And we also have a report prepared for if we spend those funds. So, all right, we've reviewed the Nexus Study. Thank you for that, Elisa and Emily.
Yes, good question. Thanks.
Okay, great. So do we want to then move on to?
Let's move on to. Yeah, so let's move on to the action item approval of expenditure remaining Rural County Grant Part A Fiscal 2022 Award with two sub items, starting with the MOAB Housing Fair Proposal for $12,000.
Yes, so the MOAB Housing Fair Proposals in your packet, we brought it softly to the last meeting and we gathered since then and put together a more concrete proposal. We've worked with the task force and we've got buy-in and support from a range of groups that are represented on that body. And Caitlin is here to talk about it. So I don't know if you want to take questions or just do a little intro on the proposal.
I'll just do a brief intro, because we discussed this at your last meeting in July. So that was really valuable feedback for us. We had a couple of planning sessions after that meeting between then and now to kind of take in that feedback and figure out what a more streamlined way would be to deliver housing education to the community. So I think overwhelmingly, one of the conversations we had last time was, it's a lot of information. There are so many things for so many different bodies. So we are proposing with this fair housing, or housing fair.
Fair housing.
Fair. To split it up into three sessions to start, to go through kind of the winter months. The first one, we have booked for December 5th, or was it for December 5th? And we are intending this to be partially kind of an overview of the Affordable Housing Plan and some high-level updates with local officials planning and zoning, just to give an overview of everything that's going on in the housing world at this point. But the intention is for this to be more of a kickoff for a longer series. So this proposal is for three events. We're still workshopping what those other two events would be, but some of the highlights have included a focus session with local government, business owners to talk more about solutions and paths forward for developing workforce housing. We've talked about doing a session focused on HGO with realtors, town company developers, to have a better understanding of how HGO is working on the ground right now and how to attract more homeowners to that program. And we have also talked about a general session focused around good tenant landlord relationships, fair housing laws, how to support both landlords and tenants in that relationship together. So those have been some of the highlights we have, you know, we could make a series every month for the next several years. But those feel like the heavy hitters that we want to start with, some of the biggest issues in our community. So this proposal in your packet is for three sessions, starting with this kickoff and then to doing two more. So we would, I would be open to feedback on, you know, if you had to pick two other sessions, what would that be to be supported by this funding? And then you can see in the budget that, that prepared for this event, that some of these will be kind of cost per event and some of them are general costs for developing marketing materials, just have one-off costs versus cost per time. But as we discussed at the last meeting, so this will be a free event for the public. We really want to attract any and all who are welcome to come. And we are planning on investing in videography so that we can record this and make it publicly available after the sessions as well. So any questions on that?
That's great. Rob.
Well, what about the cost of your time, everyone's time to run these events? I'd be in favor of like having us pay staff, you know, of HOSU or whoever to be there, because, you know, I feel like sometimes organizations, you know, have people on salary and they kind of tell them, well, you got to work tonight from six to nine to do this event. It's like extra stress for them.
That would be gladly accepted. Yes, like we would be like reversing HOSU, the land trust, that be.
Yeah.
Or are we asking that, please do it, of those entities who like to volunteer or attend Grand County?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I would say that would be greatly appreciated. In general, though, this event would be hosted through the MOAB Area Housing Task Force, which is a voluntary body that exists within the community. And so part of our, the mission of that body is to provide public outreach and education events focused on housing. So before the pandemic, we would, we did organize a few sessions. We haven't done that in the last couple of years for obvious reasons, but this is something that the task force has done in the past and something that I think would really like to pick up again. So would be appreciated, but generally the task force, you know, we're kind of all volunteers, wearing our own hats, but then also participating on the task force, so. So for the volunteer, or the people volunteering, or they need compensation for their time by their entity? They're just simply volunteering. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say I want to ask that. Yeah, I mean, I would say that that counts towards working hours for.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if it's hourly or what, yeah.
I could imagine, I could see something where if there's, if there are true volunteers that are helping this event, and that that's a labor cost to put it on, and that's something that would be a mine item.
Yeah.
People who do work to be compensated.
Yeah.
So if they're being compensated, though, just like me being at the sport, I'd be compensated by my employer, right? So I, I would be in favor of knowing like, maybe some idea how many volunteer, unpaid volunteer hours you have now and what kind of impact that would have to this budget.
Yeah.
Based on how many people are going to get this on. I don't know what rate we have, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean. Ballpark. I don't know. There's kind of a committee of five to seven of us that have been putting this on. I mean, this also includes artists that have been involved with planning a lot of this, so.
How I would maybe think about it is, we have two proposals. One is basically the balance of funds, which is the second piece. So if people feel good about both of these things, there could be a combined motion that says that we approve both of these things and that the, this could be revised up for external work after this meeting. And that. Yeah, just whatever, whatever. And that, if the second piece is approved, then the balance after the revised up budget is taken into account goes towards the other piece.
We can do some analysis of what I think would be best for.
Yeah, if you raise your.
My question is practically, how many people we are expecting to have presentation? So we can just easily decide after all. Is there any predictive numbers?
I think at this point, we're probably ballparking around forty to fifty. I think it, it kind of depends on which session I think those first one were.
So if you know that number, it's going to be easy to.
How many staff?
Even the services outsourcing, like, you know, food and beverage message, that can be calculated more easily, so.
And that kind of led into my question was, how do you, how do you plan to like, how are you going to tell what could you do with this? Like, do you have something in mind to like record how many people did come and what those outcomes were?
Yes, I think recording metrics of people who are attending and also being able to record it and upload that later also.
Right, you'll have like online view numbers of the content.
Yeah.
Something like that.
And then something for the task force as well, which is going to be an important metric for us, as we are working on updating housing plans. So I think generating feedback from, you know, kind of focusing on this first event, generating quality back from. That would be something that would go into the city counties. Which is valuable to us.
Okay.
Yeah, one last thing, maybe the, well, outcome of this organization is really important for the food, their upcoming events. So like you said, I mean, well, when they come to the place to visit us, the registration, it's just names, so. Come back with the feedbacks. That's going to be super awesome. So process.
Yeah, the only other thing I was thinking is, if there is like additional signups, like CR's list or HOSU's list, or those kinds of signups for Arroyo, for example, I mean, that to me is the goal of this. Programs that already exist, getting information to interested members of the public who wouldn't otherwise know and therefore not be able to take advantage of those existing programs.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's, that's a great idea. And that's something that the Housing Task Force is starting to work on more, is how to engage the public with all the conversations you guys are having about, you know, it's really hard to engage with local government if you don't know how or don't know what's going on. So something we're sharing the ramp with as well. So collecting that information would be valuable.
And come mean, I would like to. Volunteer first.
Wonderful. Any other questions on the budget or this item? If not, like we have to look at the next piece.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Rob.
Well, I was just going to say, you know, I can't see what the next piece is either. I guess I'm not understanding what the next piece is. Maybe this will tie into that. But if it were me, I think these events are, are a good, I'm in favor of having them because, you know, I think it's money well spent. But when I look at the individual line items here, like I said, I think the biggest line item that's not being listed or that should be listed really is everyone's time to put them on. I think the cost of the food to me seems very high on a per-person basis for forty to fifty. I think you don't need to do that. I'd rather have that be Domino's and it's $150 for five bucks a person or something like that. And then like you give that money to, you know, I don't know, like, I mean, the people that are working there to make their, to make them a little, I mean, people in housing who work in the housing, I feel like from talking to people that have worked, work in that space, it's a super stressful job. So I'd rather, I'd like to use this money to help support them to get the word out. And so I think things like that, like advertising, I don't think you have to spend so much on advertising. I don't think you need a videographer. You know, I, I saw the budget of this amount per event, I thought for sure it was going to be at the hoodoo or something like that. That was what the money was going to go to. So I'm all in favor of spending money. I'm all in favor of spending money to have these events happen. I just would rather have it go to the people that are actually working at them and not sort of. Have it be like extra fancy and extra advertised. The money does stay in our community, which is not the worst thing in the world, but that's my thought.
I was just, thank you, Rob. You just said what I was. I mean, I'm looking at the video, videography. I was just like, can we bring this to, you know, that. Space inch contraction to the event. I mean, can that be our.
It is a rock.
Right. I mean, can that, can that be what's broadcasted? Because I, and you know, the one event with tenants and. Landowners, I think that's going to be very smally participated in. I just. I don't see that is going to be, you know, like a landlord is going to be, oh, I'm going to go to this and what can I do to prove my.
Well.
Yes. And so the, yeah, the budget, and I think we had that discussion at our last meeting and the food budget was high and. Oh, yeah.
But that got brought down.
Yeah. Yeah, advertising and it's, I feel like social media would be more applicable than.
Not always as effective as you think.
Yeah. Yeah, social media budget should be fifty dollars an event. I mean, Facebook twenty five dollars you can get. I mean, that's what I use. But like I said, I think we should pay the people that are working there. When we've had events from what community childcare, you know, I, we pay all the workers hourly. I think a lot of people probably who are going to this. I mean, Caitlin is your salary, thinking of like Laura, she's probably salaried too. So I don't see any reason why we can't, you know, just pay hourly. And have that go towards however you want to work, make it work through. So.
Rob, I. Like Carly, I'm not super in favor of, I mean, if people are salaried and it's part of their job, like Ben and, and August and. Somehow they take hours off of their workday during the day. I think, you know, compensation happens that way as well.
Oh, I, I, I guess I, I disagree, I disagree on that. I, I feel like that there's that. I mean, I think someone who actually is that, I mean, in this case, like. Yeah, you're not, you're not working less that day that you're going to have to work three hours, you know, I, so. I think it's, it's a, it's real work. That's in addition, I think, I'm pretty biased, skeptical of. Salaries for sort of like nonprofit jobs because I think it's puts the worker in a tough position to. Oftentimes those jobs end up working more than forty hours a week and feel pressured to keep working and. There's no big bad capitalists at the end of the day, so it's harder to negotiate, but. So yeah, I just. Yes, I think the people that work for these things should be compensated and I'd much rather use, use money for that than for, to make the event a little extra fancy.
So to distill all the comments I'm hearing, yeah, Melissa.
So for the business summit with Ben, this year we spent, I think like a hundred, two hundred dollars on. Social media and it was successful. We reached even San Juan County and Grand County. So. I think you don't need to spend more than a thousand dollars to reach. Yes.
Right.
Yeah. And actually, I would like to volunteer if you know, I mean, I mean, I would like to volunteer for be that photography for you. We have a nice. Two cameras in our office. And like you don't need to pay me anything. It's just voluntary for me. And I would like to tell those two. If my boss allow.
The only thing I would say that I think. I, I'm totally open to seeing different numbers going to advertising, but I think that is important for events like this because part of the impetus for. This event that the housing task force was virtually talking about was communicating with folks who are working service jobs, who are too busy, who might want to attend that. Landlord landy and like sessions to understand their, their rights and get to know programs better that. They might not otherwise have access to and advertising to them is really important. Well, we are talking about the business summit, you know, we've got a hundred fifty people who have been ready for this event for two years and who have been. Were plugged into that community. This is a, it's, it's not only a new event, but I think it's a new effort. I don't know that. We've worked to put on concerted efforts like this where we're targeting folks who aren't necessarily. On the end crowd. We're very used to giving each other information about housing. And I think. A lot of the impetus for this was trying to get in touch with those folks that we don't normally. So I would just say that I think advertising is so important part of this. But perhaps it could be flyer oriented. Absolutely. To me, the spend is pretty low on social, but like it does cost money to put an ad on the TI and some news. And I think those, that's money well spent.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're also used. If you're looking for a broader part of the community, like to do involved.
Are we going to have translation services?
Great question.
That'd be great. We've talked about that task force level. There's nothing included here in the budget specifically on it, but I think that's crucial to this.
We're going to cut things, I mean, to.
Yeah.
That's a great, great comment. Yeah, Rob.
I also just like to, I mean. I still stand by what I said before, but you know, big picture here, I don't feel the need to micromanage this budget. Because overall, if we're not going to include everyone's wages on it, this is a great deal for what we're getting overall. And however they want to spend the money, the web housing task force, this is like a reasonable amount of money for. The impact in terms of having events and having people like run them. So, and I think as. They actually go forward with these events, the budget might change a bit. Maybe they have like a giveaway or something like that. I, I don't, I don't know, but. We don't need to certainly like debate every nickel and dime. Yeah. So I, I would be in favor of still like voting for this as is.
I mean, what we could move forward is, yeah, Brad.
Well, I'm going to take umbrage with something that Rob said. That, that is. We're going to have Canyonland's pizza, not Domino's. Domino's sucks.
I fully support that.
Can I make a comment on the food?
Yes, Megan, please do.
So I, I worked in catering for eighteen years. I was a chef. And in all of the events that I've done here since moving down here and doing this job as well, and all of the other events. The, the audience you're trying to attract, if you have an actual meal. Other than pizza, because they get pizza a lot for their events and things like that, you're going to attract more people because a lot of times that might be their only meal. And so that's where you're going to get your, your spread a little bit further. And somebody else might have a different opinion, but that's been my experience. If I offer a meal and it can be a cheap meal. But other than pizza, then I'm going to get a bigger attendance.
And, and Megan provided the perfect opening for me in that that was the task force thinking, you know, ultimately this body. That should, should give us good advice on how we can best spend those funds, but the task force thought, what if we come up with something better than pizza? Will that attract? One or two more people that we couldn't get before. And I also just, I'm tired of giving people pizza personally.
I agree.
But I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to make, make the order.
Are you asking the board to approve the amounts and not necessarily the budget?
Right.
So, and then within that, I mean, we could make cop, copyouts and comments and saying that generally we'd like to see. More of this, less of that within the motion without having to say specifically chop a hundred here at fifteen there. Because I think we generally, I mean, this is a guidance, right? This is more to help the board understand. I mean, we could, the board can do whatever they want.
I just wonder if it's like you'd better just like. I'll be really general when it comes to this and then you report it at the end. You know, after it'd be like, hey, this is actually what we had this.
If I could. I, I think that it, it might be worthwhile for this body for the task force to report this body. Because any in grand contract agreement with Grand County is going to have a reporting requirement. So we're going to find out how this money was spent and if we think it was done well in six months anyways. But something we could do is we could meet back with this body after the first fair, talk about what we spent, how it went and strategize for the other two. With the remaining funds.
And we could just give advice too. Cause like Rob said, it's not, I don't think we should be trying to plan this event. But just whether the price taxing is right for this, whatever we want it to be.
I mean, and I would also say if we have remaining funds, we will use that for future events. You know, it's. We're talking about three, this is a budget for three, but I think it also can be a budget for four or five. I think there's a high demand for this.
And, and I love the idea of giving folks pay or stipend, but also knowing the folks on the task force who are involved with this. They're doing it because they want to and they, they might not accept that anyways. I think just like this body, they're volunteering because they want to be part of it, you know, or getting paid to do it from their other job. Yeah.
Right. I, I would say that community advocacy is like, has always been part of my job. Like it, this doesn't feel separate from my.
Okay. Well, I'm going to suggest we look at the next piece of this proposal. Not making any motions yet. Because I think they're tied because it's the same amount of money. So again, we're looking at allocating this total amount fifty eight thousand one sixty into two separate. So we're looking at twelve grand at the moment for the housing fair, which we discussed. And then Ben, can you provide us some context as to what this is? Absolutely. So. In the spring of this year, we approved the two business grants that we've rolled out. And at the end of July, we finished accepting applications for both of them. The one that we're talking about here is the STAR business grant, STAR standing for sustainable and resilient business. And this was our pilot grant program to address economic diversification, to understand. What are the diversification related activities going on in the community? How can we help folks expand operations, start operations that we think are diversified? Increase pay or benefits and essentially sustain those businesses that we think have a lot of promise to offsetting some of our visitation economy while also supporting that with a separate grant. So with the STAR business grant, like I said, we stopped accepting applications at the end of July, we budgeted about five hundred thousand dollars for this and we got about three point four million in requests. We're looking into other ways we can bolster that budget from other sources of county funds because the reality is we got some really great project requests. We did specifically open this project to workforce housing and we got some great workforce housing projects that are easily worth. That forty six thousand number. And so, oh, go ahead.
And more.
Yes, and more and other kinds of projects, but in workforce housing alone, I think we probably got. Four to five hundred thousand dollars in requests. So there's some great projects out there. Our evaluation committee. Unfortunately, because of flooding and everyone doing all kinds of stuff this week, we weren't able to meet this week, but we are going to meet the next two weeks. They've already been assessing those. Those applications though. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to make a funding announcement in mid-September. But this would just be another drop in that pot to just help us increase the amount of projects and funds that we can help. I definitely think that it would be helpful for the grant program and, you know, we could earmark it so that that forty six thousand went specifically to. A workforce housing project or to multiple workforce housing projects. Like I said, there's a ton in there. So that will be used very quickly. But we're excited about the grant and I think that. You know, our office has put a ton of work into it. This body, before the new members joined us, spent a lot of time workshop in this grant program and made it a lot better than it was going to be in the first place. And I think that adding these funds would just be another great way to kind of increase our commitment to putting those dollars in the private sector's hands.
So Ben, what you're doing is moving one pot of money to another pot?
Yeah, sort of. Yeah, we're, we're taking from this rural county grant and we've been putting it into our. STAR business grant, the rural county grant came to us, the STAR business grant is going out to the community. Yeah, yes. Yeah. So the, the five hundred thousand dollars that's going to fund that's going out of the diversification carve out of TRT. And this is basically increasing the amount of money available to that program from five hundred thousand dollars to five hundred forty six thousand dollars and a hundred and sixty. We're talking about adding to that allocation from diversification of TRT to make that larger. But this would basically. Have an earmarked amount of money that specifically extends the workforce housing.
Right, right.
Project allocation within the STAR grant.
Was tied back to what it was originally.
Yeah. So this is just increasing.
Yeah, yeah.
Extending the impact, extending, increasing our ability to fund programs. That we think deserve funding or that the grant committee thinks deserves funding in a program that we've already created.
So. We're in a position right now, we could say we get fifty thousand to the STAR business grant and then. Eighty five hundred bucks to the housing.
Yeah, this is just what we're, staff recommendation is, the board's, the board's decision how to allocate the, the remaining fifty six. Yeah. It's as simple as we've got a proposal for twelve thousand. I subtracted that from fifty eight. This body can totally decide if they want to do a different split. Absolutely.
But both of these things ultimately go towards workforce housing.
In one way or another.
Well, this is like the grant proposal seems like it's actual.
Project.
Project, yeah. I mean, which is going to increase workforce.
Well, we, we guess we. They all have, they're all kind of different programs, right? And it's confidential. So some of them might be, yeah.
Well, we, we will know, you will know what the programs are that are funded.
I mean, right now you can't really talk about like exciting programs.
Do you want us to send it in DA?
As long as you're allowed to do it, I'm for it.
We're allowed to do it. I love that.
Hey, August, yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine with it too. I think, you know, it makes sense. And it sounds like you, you can't tell us what kind of stuff.
We, we don't know either. You know, we could tell you, we can give you an idea, like anonymously, what kinds of programs are being applied for.
Yeah.
Any question?
Yes.
What kind of workforce housing applications are we getting in, in Ross? Sure. I'd say the, the majority of applications we've gotten are from business owners who already own a plot of land that is undeveloped or underdeveloped and want to have. Money to help them with their development, whether they are small homes or RVs. In order to provide housing that's specifically for their workers. See, that's just.
For their employees.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And are you guys planning on having any restrictions on, on them depending on, I mean, are you just kind of? Like, for instance, you know, like what they would, I don't, I don't know if interests are aligned enough. So maybe it's fine, but I mean, are, are there going to be? Restrictions on what they can charge for rent, things like that?
Ultimately, that'd be the commission's decision. The, 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 the grant committee basically says this is a good program. It should be funded. And then that final award amount of a grant contracts that come out of that will go through the county commission. So there's questions like that. Where, you know, the commission could consider like, we want to make sure that this is effective along around that this is just creating a market rate rental unit that's not guaranteed to be workforce housing. That's something that the commission would consider.
The county commission is, is deciding on this. I thought you were, I thought you were going to grant, sorry?
So the process is that there's a, there's an independent grant committee, which is made up of a handful of folks that Ben can describe, but I can't remember. And they make a funding recommendation and that funding recommendation goes to the commission for their goal and the ultimate grant contracts for each individual project. Commission approves.
Okay. Yeah. Ben, why don't you tell us who's on that committee? But I think I'm, I'm ready to go ahead. Sounds good to vote on it. Yeah.
Sure. So the committee structure is one local private sector representative, which is one. And then I'm going to say. Uh, one local private sector representative, one local nonprofit representative, a city representative, not necessarily city council member, a county commissioner. And originally we had planned to have a representative from the governor's office of economic opportunity, but they're a little busy. And we put this on their calendar too late. So for the private sector representative, we have Shelly Bryant, who works at Edward Jones. For the nonprofit sector representative, we have Jen Sado at the hospital. For our county commissioner, it's Chair Jock. For the city representative, it's Ben Billingsley in finance. And then the person we had in place of the governor's office of economic opportunity works at EDC Utah. Economic Development Corporation of Utah and his name is Elbon Farrell. He's come to the community a few times to do what they call know the customers. Where they get together with different burgeoning businesses, usually like in the manufacturing space. And essentially he and a few other ECU top members have been coming down to our area. For the past year or two. So Elbon's gone to know our community pretty well. And I think that he provides a nice higher level perspective and is providing great feedback for applicants in addition to our community focused. It's a great team. I'm bummed that we couldn't meet this week, but we're doing a great job going through fifty some odd applications.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Of course.
I, I make a motion to. Take out the thirty three hundred dollars from videographer photography services. And move that into this STAR business grants, which makes it around fifty thousand dollars. You could just round it there if you want to make it fifty thousand dollars, but I guess I'll keep the motion simple. Just take that money, thirty three hundred dollars, move it to that and approve it.
Hold a second.
Okay. Any discussion? Can we, can we just make sure that we're clear on the number? I guess I would like to discuss.
Yeah, August, what was the purpose for the videographer? What was going to be accomplished?
So even to Karen's point earlier, the, the point of the.
So even to Karen's point earlier, the, the point of the videography is how many people are actually going to come to these sessions in person? Not that many, especially for targeted things like landlord rights, like landlord tenant rights. So the point of the videography was to be able to capture that and then be able to distribute that on the internet in perpetuity. So if someone in that moment says, I don't really care, I have a good relationship with my landlord. Later down the road, they actually start running into issues. They can say, oh, I saw this video on Facebook, let me go and look up my rights from that video. So it's, it's basically to memorialize all of this education, all of the effort that we're putting in so that people can refer back to that later. So it's not just a one off event, it's a live tool.
So you, you think you have enough structured content to create little vignettes that people can learn from?
I do.
We have to camera, so maybe someone wants to volunteer with me, that would be.
But you're talking about still photography.
So I, I, I just, I, I, I think that sounds like a great idea, but to me, that doesn't that sound like you can just do that with recording a Zoom or something like that? I don't, can't you just have?
I think, I think that's the question I was. Do, do, does, does the group putting this event on feel like they have the resources without additional funding dedicated to that to accomplish that goal?
And that's like three thousand dollars per event. That seems pretty weak. It's for free, so it's nine, it'd be nine thousand. A thousand for, for each, so it's nine, it's down to nine. No, so three, three. No, I mean, I mean, his, right, he's, he's, he used to be twelve thousand.
Yes.
So it's three thousand dollars per event. That seems fit to me. I think you're going to want more. I think the food's going to cost you more.
And if, if I could add, I, I know there are many ways to record things. I think that the potential to have a videographer service blends these events and future resources generated at these events, a sense of professionalism that has not been produced at previous events. And I think that if we create resources and we check a box and say, we recorded that, someone can access it in the future. That doesn't make it attractive to actually use in the future. You know, I think these are going to be well-informed discussions, not just panels, but really delivering like legal information. Information on how to go through certain processes for certain housing projects that you want to be involved in or for understanding, you know, you know, landlord and tenant rights, you know, there's not a lot of room for discussion there. We're just trying to create another resource of, hey, we know this information is legally available to you in some terrifying document. But we also have a really well-produced video that you can see. So in my mind, the fact that these events are happening in front of a crowd and also being produced as a resource later are almost separate. And I think that the task force was really keen on seeing us be able to create those evergreen resources that are professionally done. We can do it with Zoom, we can, I can record something on my phone, but our ability to market that to people who may have not attended, who don't realize any of this information, I think it's more of an uphill battle if that information is presented poorly. It's like I didn't make it to the event, so I don't want to re-watch the event. You know, it's much better for us to say, we have, you know, we have a video series, you know, they don't even need to know it was recorded at an event. We have a video series on understanding your rights as a tenant in Utah and Grant County.
Okay, I'm convinced. I, I'll.
Go ahead.
Remake it. Like a new motion?
Go for it, Dan.
Yeah, looks like to me, we need to a little bit think of the facts. Somehow this amount of money for such an important organization, digging in one thousand to three thousand things are not the matter. The matter is success of this operation and voluntarily every each of us other here who's sitting on the board is trying to help because this is one of our core issue intel. So talking about this one thousand to two thousand or five thousand things, don't get me wrong, numbers are important, but I think it's not an issue even. And like the, our head to director said, like, if there is remaining ballots, we do have trust of her, she will transfer it to the next event. So what are we talking about right now? It's, it's like to me, you don't need to go forward, we got many cases. My thoughts.
And, and we could, after the first event, I think it's a good idea for the housing task force to check in after the first event. And we can decide whether the videography is working well. And anything else.
If we spent too much or too little on food and, and you know, hopefully you all will, will, some of you can attend this event and we can get some feedback as attendees, you know. What did you think? How can we improve the next few sessions? Because ultimately, we, we want people to want to come to this.
Extending this conversation. Further. Museums about the past, but also the present and the future and creating an archive for the videography is a great way of informing people in the future, the discussions and the challenges of coming to some equitable community building solutions. And I know from my own episodic interactions with the county, no offense, but archives haven't always been where they're supposed to be or found.
One archives.
Howard Ballsley, when he was working for the county, actually captured several years of documents that had been thrown away. Now, that was in nineteen twenty-three. So none of us are responsible for any of that, but fortunately he kept them. And so he has a chronology of a lot of the major decisions that were made in the twenties and thirties. I did extend it longer than necessary.
Okay. So I, I didn't understand how important it was. I still, maybe I'm nitpicking at this point, but eleven hundred dollars for what, three hours of like, you're there and then post-production is, I don't know, two hours? It's a lot of money per hour. So I, I guess I'd be, I, I'll say, I trust that the housing task force can use money effectively. So I think, I don't know what the best way to move forward is, but I, I'm not going to vote for my own motion anymore.
Well, we can, the motion is on the floor, it's been seconded, we should probably vote on it. Yeah, you can withdraw it or we can vote.
No, I was just.
I, I think Mary, didn't Mary say you just create like a new motion or something? And as long as you get a second, it becomes the new motion. Okay, I withdraw the motion.
Withdraw the motion and then the second person says.
Rob has withdrawn and you have to agree that it's withdrawn.
He can withdraw, but I still feel like going, having money, having more money go to actual projects that are going to get housing is more important than these summer. So I'm going to stick, so if you withdraw it, I still think of having fifty thousand go towards the projects and then.
That's an important thing.
The rest of the money go towards.
So maybe I can address that.
Yes.
Because we're talking about in a separate conversations for it's fair about pulling like a magnitude greater of funding. Yeah. So, so I mean, this is, I mean, every dollar matters. I mean, we're talking about, you know, three thousand more for this program, which I think in the absence of additional funding, it would matter. But we're talking about maybe even pulling like another half million dollars to the STAR Grant program from the reserves in economic diversification. And that's nearly guaranteed. I shouldn't say that. That's, that is, that is something that is like, I want to add to the conversation.
But again, private, public partnerships, like if we have an opportunity to put as much money into actual projects and actual housing, I am still an advocate for that more than like getting together. And I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that these meetings are not important, but oh my goodness, I have been so many meetings.
Okay, let's vote, let's vote.
Like lead to these people applying for projects too, because they're learning how to do that at these meetings.
So, so perhaps the best way forward, this is a motion that's on the table, you seconded it.
Yeah.
We should just vote on that motion. And, and then if it fails and we make any motion, right?
That's another way to do it.
So I would like to call vote on the motion on the floor. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 We're voting.
We're voting, yes.
And the I is in favor of the motion.
Correct, okay. So Kelly and Karen vote in favor, all against. Rob, Brad, Dennis and Forrest. Okay, so the motion fails. I would entertain.
I would like to make a new motion to approve the funding as it stands, is twelve thousand dollars for the Moab Area Housing, uh, Moab Housing Task Force. And then the remainder forty six thousand, hundred sixty dollars to fund the STAR Business Grants.
I entertain a second. Okay, Brad with the second, Rob with the nomination. My brain's melting through my ears. Any discussion on that? I'd entertain vote all in favor of that motion. Or Kelly, do you want to discuss? Do you want to say?
No, I, actually, my only discussion is that the thought that this is going to be recorded in front of a crowd is probably kind of silly. I'm, I'm in favor of, I'm, I'm going to vote for this motion, but I really think that we may be overestimating how many people are going to participate. Not that I don't think it's important.
I mean, to me, to me, Kelly also too is like, you know, Kayla, remind them how, who's on the Moab Area Housing Task, Moab Housing Task Force. I feel like it's a good group that is, I don't believe you have any funding right now at all, right? So to me, it's like, I, I'm confident that is a small amount of money, you can spend it well, there can be more education events. So, you know.
Yeah, well, so I'll respond to both of those. So the housing task force is a body that was created in two thousand nine by the city and county interlocal agreement when they adopted the housing plan. So we've been around for a while, but it's a group of, so there's city and county representatives on it. Representation from the housing authority, community rebuilds, myself through the land trust, a few private developers attend in and out. City and county staff. Various departments are kind of the, the regulars, but we've also had. And we, throughout the years, we've also had realtors and for-profit individuals at different meetings as well. To answer Kelly's question, will it be a roaring crowd? Probably not. I would say.
Yeah, it actually wasn't a question. It was just, it's just, I've been to a lot of these kinds of meetings and, and, and I know I'm going to vote in favor. So, yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking to defend because I, I think you're, it's a great idea. It's going to be successful. I don't think it's going to be forty to fifty people, but I hope I'm wrong.
I also do, but I, I mostly say that I have organized other events on behalf of the housing task force. We usually have ten to twenty, especially for more focused things, but I've had developers that have attended those that like years later still bring them up to me. So I think it, it is a valuable exercise to record them so that people can go back. You know, I've brought people to present at the city council meeting before, and I know people refer back to that recording. So I think hearing out some mechanism to record these is a valuable exercise, whether it costs thirty, three hundred dollars to do it or not.
Well, looks like to me, what I see in my picture. I'm totally ready to do that. I'm an organizer who made several conferences in San Diego organizations. I'd be proud to help you guys to collecting all the data, what happened here in the same way. And what could we expect for this event organization? To me, like discussing, discussion, discussing, this thing is really unnecessarily, in my understanding, you're just turning around, but not defining. Sorry for my language, but like, we need to, we need to really execute this operation. Let's talk one more time if we have time. I would really appreciate it about it to help you about this. But to me, more than fifty, up to a hundred people easily can come in here. My question marketing wise, we talked about some Facebook or other platforms, online digital things. But as a public of more at Utah, what I would say is, I try to gather many information about ADUs, about additional, you know, units in the landslot. It's very limited sources. The language on the webpage in Grand County, I could understand somehow, but it looks like in most of the people, they have no awareness. Out of boxing, I can do even for you guys, a microphone, a YouTube online channel right on the street, main street. Talking to the locals, catching them up on the street and asking three questions. What are you thinking about this progress? What is your expectation as a local, et cetera, et cetera? That's going to be killing operation, I would say. We can get more than we expected. Just we need to decide about how many people we are expecting. And I'm totally behind it. We can definitely come up with some numbers. It is, my predictions are really so far so good, which I can prove myself. So Allah should be in this organization plan if it's okay for you guys. But like, I mean, you're just talking about the some numbers, which is, looks like we faded. We don't know exactly how many people come in and going, what is the marketing thing? How we will be advertising this? And the date is fifth of December, am I correct? We have a bunch of time to reach out, anything you want. So if it's okay, this is my thoughts about this conversation. Sounds like you're asking.
There's motion on the table, it's been seconded. If I could get maybe all in favor to say aye.
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 Thanks, Kelly. All right. Good work, team. I love it. I love it. Process is wonderful.
Thank you all so much.
Consensus based decision making is hard work, but we do it well. The next agenda item we have here is approval of rural county grant part A fiscal year twenty-two final report. Ben?
Sure. So in the packet, I included a report that anticipated, well, it just passed. Thank you all so much.
Well, that was the other piece.
So I provided a, a link if people actually wanted to go in and edit the document, but overall, we do have until September first to submit this. So if folks want to.
Next Thursday.
Right. So if folks want to sleep on it and make some more edits the next few days or send me comments, I'm more than open to that. It's an easy submission. This is a first draft and I plan to just improve some of the language as well. But overall, this is a summary of the spending that we have done or intend to do. The chart earlier in the packet shows what we've done with spending, but off the top of my head, the two hundred thousand dollars, four thousand of that has gone to bringing on an airport vista for our office in the near future. One hundred thousand dollars went to childcare, which Rob has put into good use, supporting childcare providers in the community as well as helping to establish their center as well. And then we just ruled on a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
See, well, and then there's forty thousand dollar match from county funds.
Right.
So, but that counts towards everything that's already discussed.
Exactly. Yes. So those were the expense for the rural county grant part A. I, I don't know though, that we can approve it later.
I, I think what we need to do today is approve it, conditional upon any changes that Betsy's fit basically. Or, or if the body has any changes. So, but we, we just need to have something on record.
Hopefully you all read it, grant reports are riveting. And I'm sure mine just blew you away.
So can I make a motion?
Sure.
To approve the proposed allocations of funds for the rural county grant program.
Specifically the final report.
The final part.
This, this is the language that's in the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
You can't read, you can't read.
Just the approval for the RCG?
Yes.
So I moved to approve the RCG part A fiscal year twenty-two final report.
Do I have a second? Second. Look at Kelly this one. Kelly, you got your fingers up your fastest.
Oh, Kelly, you're on.
Okay, motion by Karen, seconded by Kelly. All in favor, say aye. Asking unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. All right. The next discussion item is to discuss the request for qualifications for grant economic development strategic plan. The context here is that. Kelly, Kelly. Forrest spoke with.
Apparently I can't mute or unmute.
Forrest spoke with Ben while I was on vacation last week, um, about just getting this piece jumpstarted. Obviously, we reviewed the request, uh, the, uh, request for proposals last time with some amendments. We're still wrink, or ironing out, um, but that it would be a good idea to at least issue a request for qualifications. Very quickly, so that way we have, uh, good qualified applicants at least. And then we can start to vet them as we're getting the final language approved through the process. So this is less an ask to review this actual technical document because Forrest and our office and anybody else would like to spend a little extra time outside of this meeting, looking at this document. Is sure to do so. It's more, uh, do we think that issuing our request for qualifications process wise as soon as possible while we iron out our RFP, uh, is a good idea and not asking really for an action item on this.
How is this going to be put out? Is it through the state procurement system? Is it, does Grant County have a procurement system? Or do you have a list of contractors you're going to send it to? What, what's the drill?
Uh, the latter there. So we have a list of contractors who already kind of reached out. The folks that did the city vision, future IQ have, have mentioned their interest, folks that did the land use scenario, SH, SCJ Alliance. Uh, those folks have already kind of, uh, put their feelers out there. And so this would be able to actually like formally get that information and get a better understanding of their ability to, to do this work and, and see anybody else.
Sure.
That would happen during the RFP process naturally, obviously. So I don't know, Forrest, maybe you can, since this was kind of your idea to put our queue together. Do you want to speak to? Why do an RFP?
Want me to defend myself? I've been involved in economic development activities from a variety of perspectives. There are a lot of consultants and they're all chasing money. And this is a really, um, pivotal time in the community with the housing work that's being done by several groups. The kind of concerns that our tourist based businesses are having right now. I think it's important for us to do everything we can to get a number of, of applicants for this. So we can, we can review those critically and then select the right one to match this community and the task. Otherwise, we may get a lot of unsolicited, um, unsolicited proposals that may not really be focused on what we're trying to accomplish. And we're still, as I understand from August and Ben, we're still trying to refine the, the particulars of the RFP. So this is just a way to jumpstart it, get the name out. The, the community's name, not the county's name out. So that's why I thought, I thought doing an RFQ would be helpful.
Yes, for sure.
So it sounds like we should do this. Does anybody disagree with that?
No, I think an RFQ is great. I think you need to do that. I think you need to get it out there so you get some.
Right. So, so the next county commission meeting would be on the 6th of September and we could very easily get that done. And, and we might even be done with the RFP at that point. Uh, so they could go out and kind of in conjunction possibly. But that would be the deadline for us to issue.
Um, we do have to go through a commission meeting to.
That's a good question. Okay, so we could just throw in our. Okay, execute it by Friday.
Oh, sure. I'm not busy.
Great, thanks, man. Um. Can I move on unless somebody wants to add anything? No. Okay. So I wanted to quickly just go set expectations for the budget process and this board's role in that. Uh, so I'm just going to look at the calendar here really quickly. Um. So it's a couple of layers to this. The, the first layer is the statutory obligation for this body and that is, um, looking at, uh, the requesting rural county grant funds, right? That's, this is the only group that does that piece. Commission obviously does the final approval, but this is the body, that's the sole goal of this body. The travel council board has a statutory obligation to recommend a prioritized list of expenditures for all TRT and, uh, I'm blinking out of a restaurant rental tax as well. So they have broad jurisdiction. Jurisdictions, broader statutory responsibility. What, and then, and then those two things go into the county's budget process, which begins in September and ends at the end of this year for the, for the calendar year, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023. So I have to submit a budget request to the, the budget advisory board. By the end of October, yeah, because I have a complicated budget, I get latitude to do that later than some other departments, fortunately for me. Um, and so that this role, this board by body and the travel council advise on that budget request, basically, that I put forth to the county commission through the budget that I advisory for. So what I'd like to do, uh, is basically have this board, obviously we have to put the application together for the rural county grant piece by October 1st. So at the next meeting, that'll be considered. And then also kind of specifically kind of advise on economic diversification funds for 2023 and kind of make a list of prioritized expenditures for that, to go to the travel council board, for them to present as a part of their statutory obligation. And, uh, what, what, what that means is that there has to be strategy attached to budget recommendations, which I think is the hard part. So what I'd like to do sometime September, our next meeting is, is at the end of September on the 28th, um, is to have some kind of strategy conversation that's out of the regular schedule. Involve the travel council board and some commission folks, uh, so that we can look at all of the numbers relevant to kind of talk through the strategy or how the budget should look like for next year. And have that, have that be kind of an intensive retreat type of session. I don't know where it looks like. It's here, it's somewhere else. So just putting that on people's radar is something I'm going to try to schedule, uh, early in September. And ask any questions people have about process. And assuming probably not everybody will be able to make some kind of a strategy session of some kind, especially. But, uh, that makes sense to everybody in terms of like, you know, how that works and what. The main thing I want to avoid is putting together budget requests the week before Chris Bear Des, we're going to have a meeting on the Friday. And be running around with my head cut off and like, okay, did that program happen? Is that the right thing? Should I change it? Because I mean, last year I got hired in the middle of the budget process. Pretty tough. So anyway, that, I just wanted to bring that up, make sure that those transparent people kind of understood the expectations of the advice and support I'm asking.
Last year, what was your budget?
It's a total cost. So I have to estimate. So we had about $1.6 million for tourism promotion activities. There's about $600,000 for film record convention. That didn't all go to our department. And then we had about a million for economic diversification. None of the mitigation money went to us. That was about let's say $8 million, $5 million went to the sheriff's department. There's some other money in other places. And then the, uh, train, uh, train, TRCCA, which is the restaurant and car rental tax mostly went to Little Spanish Trailer Rea. Grand Center and I'm guessing off the top of my head, I think that was like one and a half.
I'm certain. No, I would like what we, what you would ask us to strategize on, yes.
I, I guess that we're looking at more like two and a half million dollars approximately. But this body more like one, because I, I asked this body specifically about that diversification money plus the rural county grants. So I guess $1.2 million.
Yeah, before that meeting, you may get some sources like that.
Yeah.
What was the submission of the expenses or?
I mean, my goal is that I would comment that first time to prepare my thoughts and more or less ask for marginal changes rather than, hey, what did the budget be?
Large.
Yeah, yeah, bigger.
Good girl.
More tourists. Um, okay, I want to move on and talk about future agenda items unless there's any questions. No. Okay. So what's coming up is October 1st. Well, I guess I should say that Ben is going to complete that, um, final report by next week. So then basically we're eligible to apply for the next round, assuming we satisfy that, that, that reporting requirement. We'll apply, we'll plan, we'll put together an application collectively and we'll apply by October 1st for the rural county grant fiscal year 23 application, which is due on the, on the October. Um, we talked about last time about chair vice chair, et cetera. So we continue having that conversation. Obviously it didn't happen today. Seems like maybe I should just keep chairing this and have a good vice chair in case I can't be here. And that, uh, moving forward on the, getting that RFP done, it's basically done. I just didn't have time to incorporate the comments from this group from the last meeting, take vacation and respond to lots. So with that, I mean, there's not really, is there anything else people want to see on the agenda that whether they want us to discuss or act upon or?
It's probably going to be a lot, just.
Yeah. And it might, you know, we'll split that up. Any question?
Yes. For how we back last fall, did those ranking workshops with EDA?
Yeah.
We're trying to create the grant program. We want to do something like that with this group.
Really like, for like a budget workshop.
And that, or in the last 30 minutes of today, do you want to go around and talk about what people identify as priorities to them? We can put it in the document and at least start thinking about what's going to be part of it.
Um, well, it's not on the agenda. So it's not on the agenda, can't do it. Fortunately. What a blessing to leave half hour early.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. Ben is a king of efficiency and productivity. He can't help it. Well, I mean, it could be part of you again, that it could be discussing what will go into. If, if, yeah, if, I think this is a good opportunity. If there's something you want to see discussed, that is the place for sure. So if there's, if there are priorities that you're not seeing us address, this is a good time to bring it up to them. Whether, whether, I mean, I think there's a lot that's in that RFP that captures most everything, but if, yeah, is there anything that people want to put on future?
Well, the first meeting we had, that was super informative to me. What we're looking for, what are we going to do? It looks like to me, we need to come up with some specific topics, like if it's housing, if it's diversity businesses, being commissioned or getting some more way for upcoming years, because our numbers here and the next us, all may be different. There are many opportunities that we see, but it looks like to me, you should be focusing on the obstacles taking off and the dream comes itself. So a roadmap specified with some topics, but specific topics. Planning in a year or six months, that is our expectation and then go through it to. Oh, this is what we're doing currently, but I think we need to be more specific on that. Okay. As a economic, you know, advisor for, so. Maybe this, excuse me.
Okay, you finish, finish your.
Yeah. Well, there are some decisions, maybe as much as possible. I tried to watch out, but I'm only the grand county. Looks like to me, things are, when I go back, read the articles the previous time, I'm talking about last nine to 10 years. They're, it like, to me, at first look, it's a loop. Yeah. No execution, just talking, walking over, but there are some, but not really all. That makes me to think of a little bit like more specific and that we can really take some way. I mean, at least in upcoming two years, I'd like to be announced like, you know, during, you're sitting here, these people made something really. So, does that make sense?
Makes total sense. And I, I think we're, I'll let Kelly speak in just a second, but I think we're, we're, I think on the way to do exactly that. That's what we're asking for a consultant to help us produce through the strategic planning process. And I think we have an opportunity to start that internally during the budget process because the budget determines our priorities, right? So early next month, we'll be able to sit down and hash out, these are these things. And I think we'll bring up the past prioritization exercises. Great. So these are the things we said are priorities. Maybe we funded them, maybe we didn't. How do we generally at the beginning of the year, where should we be started? And hopefully the strategic planning process happens and it, and it augments or, or, or changes around the budget that we've already kind of started the strategic plan. I mean, in a perfect world, the strategic plan would be done and the budget process would get breezed. It's, oh, these are our priorities. But, you know, takes longer than.
Well, I think there's a lot too going on now, like even with the water studies and things that are going to change the way we look at, you know, what our strategy is. You know, there's some big things coming out of that, that are like, well, if we start, starting to mine water, we're going to change all of this discussion.
Right. And so I think strategic planning with kind of consistent feedback. I think it's so easy to say, here's the roadmap and then things change and turn the roadmap away. I think here's the roadmap. What do we need to modify with that based off of this quarter's reality? And I think that's a role. Kelly, did you want to add something?
I just have a future agenda item that came to my mind.
Thanks, thanks for, thanks for coming. I think that's.
So, um, I'm hoping that you can give us an update on the impact of the STAR grants and also the potential $500,000 that's going toward that in terms of what was accomplished and you know, what, what's happening. That's pretty exciting. And if all of that really gets implemented, it could have a huge impact, it seems like. So I'd, I'd love to have an update at some future meeting.
By the next, by the next actual meeting, we should have it out or like at least allocated.
Yeah, checks might not be enhanced, but we'll know what projects we're, we'll be able to talk about.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And ideally, I mean, Ben and I have talked about this, um, the, the governor asked us for some excuse to come down for some economic summit or something like that. We might, after the awards are announced and everything, have some kind of reception with the awardees and have this board and like commission of the city council and whoever wants to be there with the, with the governor or someone else, so that you, you know, have the big checks and have the photo op and kind of have an opportunity to, to show to the legislature at the governor's office. This is what we did with this money that you allowed us to do. We kind of start that soft lobbying process early with a small party of. Give me a.
Yeah. Uh, I would also say on the subject of soft lobbying, I think us advising on the budget, it's good to keep in mind that large number, but I'd also say, I think the rural county grant is slightly separate from the budget. It presents a really unique opportunity for us to specifically show the governor's office what we're up to. In the past year, they gave us almost $500,000 specifically for housing. Which was more than any other county that was up for these awards one and was unprecedented in many ways. We're very lucky to have receptive ears at that level and especially with the governor who's very rural focused. And so I think that, that $200,000 that we advise on, that this body buys on, I think is a specifically a great opportunity to, as you were saying, advise on some things that we think are sooner than later actionable and really just address very plainly what some of our basic community economic development needs are. I think the way I see, you know, the budget is, there's so much money there. It's a great tool to, you know, fund for things that we might not see results on in a few years, but are worthwhile funds.
Well, it's all the budget.
Right. It's all the budget, but this, this rural county grant is just, we have eyes on us and right now they're very supportive of us addressing things like housing. You know, where we feel that sometimes like the legislature might not be as supportive of our community as we want to. This is something that's kind of in our favor right now. So I'm just excited to see what we put together and keeping in mind who's reviewing it and how we can use that $200,000 to show off those projects that we think can like very near term, when it comes to fruition. So just adding on to the soft lobbying, just another example to show, yeah, that's a good point, Ben. Appreciate it.
So with the RFP, if it goes out. So with the RFP, if it goes out, when are you hoping that work starts and when we could potentially have a plan in place?
It's a good question, I, I kind of, I'm not sure. I can't tell exactly how long these kinds of things take, but I would, I would hope that it's something that, you know, it next year's completely done at the latest. How, how did your, how does the timing of the TRCA?
It was, it's been about 10 months. Since, like, since award and then since like they started, I would say.
So I guess September nineteenth.
Nope, okay, so it's been shorter than, it feels so much longer. So I think it was 10 months all told, like we had, we had a completion date of about October.
Well, because September nineteenth is when the thing is.
Yeah, the summit is, and then the last presentation, so I think 10 months is, we had a really robust public process, which is what has taken so long, because we've had all the that have had like a lot of interests, so I think it's a lot of time.
I hear tons of great feedback about the public engagement process. So.
So it's gonna depend on their proposals and what they have in mind.
Yeah, so mid next year.
What do you think Forrest, you've done this thing before.
Still having to defend myself. You know, you could, you could estimate anywhere between six and nine months from beginning to end. The firm we want will have done all their research from documents and all other sources that they can in putting a proposal together. The, the public engagement process that has been going on with Moet tomorrow, today is, is great because you're trying to reach the broadest part of the community, especially those who don't always participate. I think that group is, is smaller for this particular RFP, there's some more specific focuses you want to put to it. So if, if the group, if the proposals are received by, you know, the end of November, you can go through that review process, December, January, it should be ready to kick off by then.
Yeah, so I think for me, my goal would be RFP by the end of the week. RFP by September sixth, leave it open for the whole month of September. Award October first, or whatever the closest meeting to that is, and then nine months after October first is the end of June. And then that gives us, you know, at that, at that point, I mean, we're well into next year, but, but then have enough time to get the budget process from like four, five. So I guess for me, it would be useful, Forrest is already doing additional work on this, but if anybody wants to need additional resource to support the RFP process, that's at a board meeting, I would, I would take that volunteer. If anybody's interested and wants to help out, if not, we're, we'll do it, this flood stuff is out of my brain, but. So open invite. So with that, I'll, I'll, this meeting, the genus come, we're at the end of the agenda. And so I call this meeting to a close, thank you everybody so much. Thank you all so much.
August, I have a confession that I need to share with you all.
Outside of the meeting?
Right here. I made reference to the first half of the twentieth century, the county's ability to maintain records. It's just important to you all know that the museum had the same problem. Which is a little ironic, understood, we don't have it anymore, but, but we did, the museum knows very little about its own history, so.
So you're saying we're buddies under the bus.
Hence the importance of videography.
I love that, thanks everybody online, yeah, thanks for, thanks. Thank you all so much for the great input today.